Good evening, Council. It is City Council Study Session. Today is Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. And it's six, little after 6:30 PM. First thing up is our roll call. And, oh, study session. Lockout. Okay, meeting accessibility. Pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Proclamation 20-25, the city is unable to provide an in-person location for the public to listen to the virtual City Council meeting this evening. Meetings are still accessible to the public, and public comment is able to be submitted. To view live, the city website is www.samamish.us/tv21, the city YouTube, and also on Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. To view later, the meeting videos are available the day after the meeting on the city website, www.samamish.us/tv21, and on YouTube and on the Comcast Channel 21 within Samamish only. The first thing we have is executive session. And I'm going to estimate that we are going to be in, oh, gosh, we say an hour, but I'm going to tell you it's probably going to be an hour, I'm going to go for an hour and a half, actually.
Make sure it's under paragraph, sub-paragraph F.
Yes, I've got that, thank you. And so my guess is we will be back 6:30, okay, so I'm going to put us back at 6:30, 7:45, actually. If we're not, otherwise, I will be back out here to tell you something different. And that puts us for, let me read my, what we're going to cover. I don't have my subsections here, but I believe it is G and F. I believe it is litigation and review of public employee. Is that G and F? Lisa, are you on the line?
Can I get, what do you do that, 1, 2, 1, G and 1 F? That's correct, Mayor.
Correct, okay, thank you.
All right.
All right, so.
Can I ask a procedure question?
Okay.
Hi, Lisa, a procedure question. You've mentioned earlier that we've been operating under a misunderstanding that you cannot conduct business during a study session, and that the study sessions are just the same as a regular session, just under a different name. And so then it begs the question, why would we not take role at a study session as we do normal, regular meetings?
Well, the law, the OPMA RCW 4230 recognizes only two types of meetings. There are business meetings, excuse me, regular meetings. And regular meetings are meetings that occur pursuant to your resolution or ordinance that designates the meeting time and place. Here, it's 6:30 on Tuesday's first, second, I think, four, if I'm not mistaken. Special meetings are any kind of a meeting that takes place outside of that schedule established by resolution or ordinance. The law does not care whether you call it a workshop, a study session, a business meeting, a regular meeting, a down hall meeting, or what have you. It only cares about a regular meeting or special meeting. So you are able to take action at a study session. You are able to take public testimony, if you like, at a study session. It's really within your discretion.
So would you recommend we instill a discipline of taking role during study sessions?
Yeah.
Look, you can, or you can, you know, I think your council policies probably dictate what you will do at study sessions. Your council policies are not laws. You can change them anytime. You can suspend a rule so that you can take role. And I believe the Chair and Robert's rules have the authority to suspend rules so that you can take role if you choose to. But that's really not a legal issue.
Thank you.
Chris, if I may, that would be consistent with previous council policies. We've always taken attendance on the councils I've served on before this one.
Yes, I don't think I've missed a meeting where we haven't taken attendance. So let's go back, and Lita, would you please call roll?
Mayor Karen Moran.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Kristi Malcho. Councilmember Ken Gablin.
Present.
Councilmember Tom Odell.
Present.
Councilmember Chris Ross.
Present.
Councilmember Pamela Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kent Trine.
Okay. Okay, we are now headed back to executive session. And we will be back somehow, one way or the other, at 7:45. Thank you. This is City Council Study Session for Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. We are extending our executive session. Again, this is for June 8th, 2021. Extending executive session for one hour. We will be extending our executive session for one hour to 8:45. Thank you. Okay, welcome back. We are back from our study session.
Executive session.
Executive session, sorry. And we're going to try to get back on schedule. And first thing up, we have got discussion tonight on our Maintenance Operations Center. Who's going to be heading that up? Oh, first, we're going to go over to Tom Odell. So Councilmember Odell, do you have something that you wanted to bring back from our executive session?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor, thank you. I'd like to make a motion. And basically, the motion is the same one I made in the May 18th meeting, that we ascertained that it'd be a good idea to have the same motion and a second vote on it. So that motion was, I move that the City Council authorize the hiring of outside legal counsel for the purpose of conducting an investigation into a city employee. That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? Okay, hold on, because Pam, we're not hearing you come through, so hold on.
Great. Did your, did your motion transmit?
Please enter your access code, followed by the pound or hash sign.
Do I have to get back over and get it again?
Check, check, check.
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 Councilmember Stewart?
Yes?
Okay, we're good. Deputy Mayor?
I'm here.
All right, we're good.
Should I start over? Okay, Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. And that motion is that I move the City Council authorize the hiring of outside legal counsel for the purpose of conducting an investigation into a city employee.
Second.
Motion on the floor, we have a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Okay, so the motion passes with a four-three.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do we go back into executive session now? So we can start the investigation? Yeah, that's why we took a vote, so we could get this started.
So next, next thing up, we are going to go, and we are going to start our topics here.
Point of order.
Okay, point?
My point is that we just voted to start an investigation, and I believe that we have the investigator on site, and we need to get that started. Yeah, that's why we took a vote, so we could get this started.
Perhaps to do the framework?
I think we should, yeah. Maybe a short one?
Okay, so listening to the woman, or the attorney that's here that's going to be doing this, we are going to do a five-minute. So it is 8:50, and we will be back at 8:55. So we will go into executive session for five minutes. It is 8:50, we will be back at 8:55. We've got a full standard.
Can you please recite the RCW, Mayor?
And it will be under RCW.
So, 132, uh, what do you got there? 132.311.
It's F.
It's F. Got it.
It is 8:50, and we will be back at 8:55. And we will go into executive session for five minutes. It's 8:50.
Okay, we are back on time. It is 8:55, and we are on to discussion of our Maintenance and Operations Center renovation. Okay, and Anjali?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council, and Mr. City Manager. I'm Anjali Meyer, Director of the Parks Recreation and Facilities Department. Our first topic for tonight is an update on the renovation and expansion project for the city's Maintenance and Operations Center. Expansion and improvement will create much-needed additional office and meeting space in the existing building. They will also help address a shortage in vehicle and equipment parking. Work on this project started back in 2018, and the project budget was set based on a study from that year. As the team progressed through design and the construction documents phase of this project, the estimates went up significantly. We notified City Council about this earlier this year. Bids were open last month, and as expected, there is a significant shortfall between the project budget and the bid amounts. The presentation tonight will cover the scope and paths to complete the project. For tonight's presentation, I am joined by the city's consultant, Lee Drittmeyer, Principal Architect at the Drittmeyer Architects, and Seda Baran, Senior Project Manager for Facilities. I'll take you through the first few slides, and then hand it over to Lee to make the rest of the presentations. Next slide, please. So here is the slide outline for tonight. We will go through the objectives of tonight's presentation, a little bit about the background, project's scope, budget, a few options for council to consider, a timeline, and then we will open it up for questions. Next slide. So the goal tonight is to obtain council feedback on the bids received for this project to determine the contract scope. And no action will be needed tonight. Our staff is looking for direction, and we hope to bring this back next week for council to award or reject the contract. Next slide. So the MOC, the Maintenance and Operations Center, the acronym we use is the MOC, was built in 2010. And in the last decade, we are seeing a lack of space for vehicle and equipment storage. We also don't have any meeting space, really. There is an office at the lower level that was repurposed into a small meeting room. And at the upper level, there is one office that is currently shared by the three superintendents for streets and stormwater, parks, and facilities, as well as a contract administrator and a facility and street coordinator. So there are five people in a cubicle layout. And the goal is to add some office space and a meeting room as part of these improvements. All this work is based on a building analysis that was done back in 2018. And subsequently, a contract was signed with Drittmeyer Architects in 2020 for the design and construction phase of the project. Next slide. So just to give you a sense of some of the changes since the MOC was built, the staffing, as you know, continues to increase. Public works also made a shift from hiring seasonals to working with full-time employees, so they are there round the year. There's also been a significant increase in vehicle and equipment in the last decade, it's almost tripled. Park property alone has increased from about 450 acres to 645 acres. We've also added facilities, the Central Washington University, the Sween House Counseling Center, the Community Center, and the Maintenance and Operations Center itself. And finally, we've seen an increase in streets and stormwater facilities with all the additional development, as well as from annexations, Kehani being the biggest one. So in short, we are serving a lot more parks and streets and stormwater. And so we've scaled up our operations and are really working out of the same size of space and sites that was set up a decade ago. So what we do want to be transparent and point out is that the improvements in this project will only meet the short-term needs for the crew. And as you know, from the CIP, Facility CIP discussions last year, a second MOC will still be needed to address the growing needs. Next slide. Yeah, I'll now turn it over to Lee.
Yeah. Trying to get my camera, all right. So I'm going to run you through the three different scopes of the project, Building A, B, and C. Building A is the main office and operations building currently on site. The scope for that work is to convert the existing woodshop to a meeting space and an office that would house up to four workstations. The woodshop was then relocated to an existing storage room and set up again. There's air conditioning being added to these new spaces, and also to the current office spaces that don't currently have air conditioning, which are the lobby and some of the meeting rooms downstairs, and then the office space upstairs. There's a new exhaust being installed in the welding shop to get those fumes out, and so that they don't circulate back into the current air system. There is a tailpipe venting system being installed in the garage for maintenance of vehicles when they are running to get the exhaust out of the building. There's an epoxy floor protection going on, being installed into the garage as well, where some chemical damage has occurred from vehicles being parked there. And then the HVAC controls and lighting controls for the building are being replaced with one that is going to be, is much easier for its staff to operate, and can do so remotely. Next slide. The new building, which is called Building C, is mostly a duplication of the current parking building on site. Instead of a truck wash, though, this one will include five parking bays for the vehicles and for sanders to hang from the roof, and also a heated storage room for storm equipment. Then there's also seven parking stalls being developed outside of the building, adjacent to it, along with the storm retention system and related site work, including an oil-water separator for the building. Next slide. And then Building B, which is the current vehicle parking building and truck wash, the scope is fairly limited in there. There is a new trench drain being installed where the vehicles and sanders are located, because there's not currently one. And then the trench drain for the vehicle wash, which often clogs, is being replaced. And a new oil-water separator is being installed. For the security improvements, a new chamber fence is being proposed to be installed around the property lines of the property. And that is the scope of the project. And now I will be turning it over to Matt Wolsey, who is with Wolsey Company. And he is the cost estimator, who will talk a little bit about how construction prices have been changing over the past year.
Thanks, Lee. Yeah, I don't know if you want to maybe chime in on this next slide. I think we might have jumped the gun on me taking full reins. If we can take a look at that next slide, that'd be great. Did we take out the, okay, it looks like we took out, I'm operating off of an old document. Excellent. Okay, so yeah, the cost of construction, the overarching cost of construction has gone up considerably now compared to prior years. Throughout the country, but in particular, hot areas for construction, like the Pacific Northwest, are seeing construction costs increasing 7% when you're used to about 3% cost inflation. And, you know, we're seeing large increases just by the quarter. And that's, when I speak 7%, that's the overarching construction cost of all things construction. But if you look and hone in on metals and on lumber, and in particular copper, as we can see on the other slide here, copper pipe, and really anything metal-related, as well as lumber, have gone up substantially due to the current events and the effects of COVID. Why lumber and why metals have skyrocketed, and other parts of the construction industry materials haven't? You know, you could probably make an argument one way or the other, but it's more or less just mania. When world events like these take place, you never really know which way that mania is going to present within the market, but you know it's going to present. And that just happens to be the way it's presented here in this, in this particular world event. So, yeah, we're looking at a very inflationary construction market right now. And there's not really a good timeline on when it's going to, it will revert back to the mean. I think everybody can agree on that within our industry. We just don't know when. We have no timeline. It's like asking when things are going to go back to quote-unquote "normal" regarding COVID. None of us know that answer fully, truly. So the markets will follow suit once everything sues out. But currently, we're in an inflationary environment, and that's why, part of the reason why the, we anticipated this, luckily. On the last budget estimate, we did, we were spot-on with what the market ended up showing us, which was the winning bid there. So we were within $70,000 of the winning bid on a multi-million dollar project. So that's pretty good as far as accuracy in-house here between the Drittmeyer Architects and the Wolsey Company, but it doesn't do much for your budget. As far as budget goes, that's what we're looking at, increased construction material prices, heavy inflation across the board, really.
Thank you. And did you want to speak to the next slide briefly? We have one more slide related to cost increases.
Okay, yeah, let's go ahead and see, take a, all right, yeah, it looks like I'm looking at the wrong file. That's my fault back here, I'm dealing with the wrong PDF. So I'll just go ahead and take a look at this. Oh, yes, that's all great, I'm glad you guys put that, glad you guys put that. There's an echo that came through, can we mute that? There we go, can you guys hear me all right? There we go. Sorry about that. So you hear, if you see the highlighted section of this chart, you can see we're dealing with, you know, I think about the last decade or 15 years of material costs. And this is just a basket of material costs. And this is compiled by the St. Louis Fed. They do a great job with all things charts. And you can see here, just in this last year, how much of a skyrocket we're really looking at. Those other charts that we had on the prior slide showed it pretty well within our area. I just felt this was, this really would answer you guys' questions. And if you revert back to, if you can see there in the gray shaded area, that's the last recession we were in, that's the 2008, 2010. That's the last time we had a world event take place that shocked the markets. So you can see how there's a spike, and who knows how long, but it goes back to normal. I think we're at the top of the spike, if I were to hazard a guess. And I'm guessing we're going to start working our way back to normal here over the course of the next six months to a year.
Thank you. Next slide, Lita. So council, the initial estimate for this project from a study in 2018 was $1,085,000. And that was the number that fed into the 2019, 2020 mid-biennial budget. And subsequently, then the team has worked on a set of construction documents. So the estimates of $1,085,000 were based on a study, not a full-blown design. And when the 100% construction documents were complete, the consultant bid estimate that the total project cost would be in the neighborhood of $3.4 million, with a budget shortfall of $2.315 million. And that is how the bids have come in. So what you see to the right of this slide is that the base bid, or the modifications to Building A, are about $733,000. Building B has a small amount of drainage improvements, that's at $178,000, and some change. And then Building C is about $1.5 million. And once you add your taxes and contingencies and other soft costs, the total project costs are just shy of $3.4 million. Now, you know, the multiple reasons for these cost changes, as we discussed, one is that the initial costs were off a very preliminary study and were not adjusted when we brought the design contract to council. And the other reason you heard from the estimator is just what the market's doing with COVID. But I did also want to, you know, share a third reason, which is this project has changed, has seen several stop changes. And so there have been some inefficiencies because of that. I am the fifth director working on this MOC upgrade project. Next slide, please. So the options that we would recommend at this point are that council could elect to move forward with just the base bid, which is the renovation to Building A. And the amounts you see here are the bid amounts with taxes and contingencies. We would have to add the soft costs, the design and inspection and testing costs. If council awarded just Building A, we would almost make it within the remaining budget for the project that would be carried forward, through the carry-forward process. We would be short by about $150,000. And we could absorb that within the Facilities CIP budget. by about $150,000, and we could absorb that within the facilities CIP budget. So that's one option. And another option we would recommend is if we also take on Building C, at that point we might as well award the whole project, but that would involve council authorizing a one-time capital transfer from the general fund of an amount of $2.35 million, which is the budget shortfall. And then, of course, there is a third option to reject all bids and do the project at another time when we can allocate the adequate funds to do it. And, you know, like the estimator said, we don't know when prices will stabilize and when things will go down. And in the meantime, you know, the folks at the MOC are really having a hard time when they are dealing with snow and trying to provide quick responses. You know, they are double parked and triple parked and really managing in a tight space. So they very much look forward to this project moving forward, but we do understand that it is significantly over budget. So we are looking for your direction tonight. Next slide. So in terms of timeline, we are bringing this to you tonight in the study session, and with direction from you, we hope to bring back a construction contract for award or rejection at the next meeting. We hope to, if we are moving forward on the project, we'd like the contractor to be able to make the most of the summer months and get started with the site work, particularly if we are awarding the...a Building C to be constructed, which involves site work as well. Next slide. With that, we will open it up to your questions.
Okay, we've got lots of questions, so let's start with Councilmember Trinh.
Yeah, Anjali, by the way, thank you very much, and for staff and for the contractor for providing an excellent presentation. As far as direction goes from the council, alternative number one seems to me to be a good step in the right direction, especially if we want to move forward quickly. I like alternative number one. I would be...alternative number two will be okay as well, but I think there would be a need to have the city manager and the finance guy come to us and just say, "How...so if we do this, what then happens to the budget? What do we have to take off, in a sense, or what are we not going to provide if we provide this?" Alternative three, just you could...in my...for my position on this, just you can remove that. We're not going to...we shouldn't delay the project, so...but my first impression is that alternative number one, after reading all this stuff, is the way I would prefer the contractor to lay it out for us for next week. And again, thank you for the hard work, and also thank you so much for being patient with this council. And I feel like I owe the staff an apology for us taking forever to even come out to see your presentation. It hurts my heart to know that you guys are working this late, so hopefully we can get that rectified in the future. Thank you. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
And I also would agree with that. Thank you very much to all the staff that is with us tonight and is working...going to be working late with us this evening. Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you. I would encourage all the council members, if you haven't already, to get a tour of these facilities. It was incredibly enlightening to actually go there and see what staff is dealing with. I have a couple of questions around the prices. So if I read those graphs correctly, the one graph shows the...just the overall cost, construction cost over time, year over year. So if we looked at that bar chart, it basically says that, you know, costs are going up every year, right? That the overall costs don't come down year over year. I think the chart that we saw, it's not actually in our presentation, but it was...it showed the recessions, and so it showed spikes and things coming down. Was that just materials costs?
I believe that was just material costs. The one that had...it had different...yes.
Yeah, so there was the...it was a line graph, and it had a couple of gray...it had like a gray spot for 2008, and it showed costs spike up, and then they came back down just a little bit. But I'm guessing that was just materials. So the reason I ask that, and the reason I want to point that out, is that if you look at that bar chart over time, whatever we delay, it's just going to get more expensive. It's just going to continue to get more expensive. And I don't even believe...so one of the things we haven't factored in, and Anjali, I don't...you probably don't have a number for this, but the...those operation centers are so undersized and underdesigned at this point that staff is spending a fairly considerable amount of time just having to move things around sometimes, right?
Right. Particularly when you have storm events.
Right. And people are probably already working overtime at that point, right? So it's already, you know, not only just an extra burden on staff, which should not be minimized, but it's extra time when we may already be paying more for that time. So...and that hasn't been sort of factored in, right, to the opportunity costs that you would pull off of these costs to say, "Yes, it's going to cost us this much to do the work, but it's going to cost us this much if we don't, or we can subtract this much because we're going to save time if we do this work." So I personally think that, over the long haul, the sooner we do this, we are...I think you already said you're the fifth director working on this, which already implies that this has been something that's been in the pipeline for a really long time, hasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, so we've already been kicking this can down the road. The only last question I would have is, does doing this work eliminate the need for another operation center in the south end of the city, or will we still need something down there?
We would still need a second center. This just gives a temporary relief to keep us going in the time it's going to take to find another site, plan for it, and build it.
Right. So it's temporary, but it's probably temporary for like a pretty long time, because it'll take a really long time to get...to find a site and design it and build it. So it's a long-term temporary solution, it sounds like. Okay, well, you know, I really appreciate the staff. I know a couple of years ago, when we had the big snow, we went over and visited some of the folks who were out there working. In these events, just for the public who doesn't know, our staff works so hard, and they're often working around the clock. They're working so hard that sometimes they wear the equipment out because they're just working so hard. So I think we need to be looking at how we make sure that we can make sure these centers stay safe and stay efficient and help our staff do their jobs without making it harder. So that's just my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. Anjali, thanks for the overview on this whole situation. I guess I'm a little amazed that already we're back looking at expansion on this, because the facility, I think, just opened in 2018. Am I correct on that? But as I said, that the facility design was set before Kohani happened, before Kohani became a reality. It was set before Semimish grew as much as it did organically. Maybe, yeah, maybe we should have done a little better job looking ahead, but at the time we opened this facility, we thought it was hold us for a while. It's so...so I have to ask a question. I believe in my heart and heart that we do need to do something. If we had to take option one, are those things listed in priority order if we had to spread things out?
Yes. The first priority...the first priority would be modifications to Building A, and then the second priority would be Building C. And, you know, that helps make the site more efficient and also protect the assets. You know, we're buying expensive trucks, and then we are exposing them to the elements. So...but that is the second priority. And the modifications to the existing outbuilding, which is Building B, are insignificant, which if you...if we are tackling Building C, it would make sense to include that as well. And that's why I've kind of simplified it to three options. Option one would be to award Building A, and option two would be to just award the whole project, but it would involve reallocation of funds. And then an option three would be not to move forward.
Right. Well, I don't think option three is viable, in my own opinion. So we're dealing with one and two. Yikes. My heartburn is that I know this is not the only capital project in the city that we're looking at. There are others out there, too. And I do have a little bit of discomfort about having to make one-off decisions as opposed to a whole package, but I think this one is pretty darn important because we're undersized on this one. And, yeah, I do know we need to do something in the southeast end of the city as well, but I think that's going to be a larger multipurpose facility, at least in my mind. So I will be in support of basically doing the whole thing, and if we have to transfer funds from reserves, we do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, and thanks to staff for the presentation. I think Councilmember Odell took the words out of my mouth, and that is that we're not looking holistically at everything. In fact, our next presentation is about Fire Station 82, where we allocate the $2.7 million, and then a preliminary estimate for the changes is $6 million. So I'm curious if someone can answer the question, and I don't know if our city manager's on this call or not, or if someone can answer the question. But like, where are we with the general fund? If we pursue this project and have to do a general fund transfer in order to make up the difference for the $2.3 million that we're short, where does that leave us for projects like the fire station? Are we going to have enough in our general fund to keep moving money? And where is that breaking point where the council needs to make some pretty interesting decisions about our budgeting moving forward and how our revenue sources come in and how we allocate them?
So we...I did talk to Aaron Anton, our finance director, earlier today, and we have...we anticipate an ending fund balance of $30 million in unrestricted funds in the ending fund balance, both at the end of this year and next year. Those are ballpark numbers. But, you know, again, what else the needs are, it's the mention of looking at things holistically. This would be looking at one project at a time, to your point, Deputy Mayor. And as for the fire station, what we're going to see in the next presentation is that we actually will not be building it in this budget cycle. So that will be deferred to the next budget cycle, not to say that, you know, money's still going to be needed, but not in this budget cycle. I don't know if Dave is on the call, but Aaron Anton is on the call.
Okay. Yeah, no, I recommend, even to you, Anjali, that the fire station wouldn't be constructed until the next biennial budget cycle, but I think it's just the nature of the beast that all these projects that we have kind of waiting in the wings, whether it's, you know, a capital project in terms of a road project, or whether it's, you know, construction for a building. All of these costs are going to continue to increase, and I think to Councilmember Stewart's point, you know, kicking the can down the road does not make them less expensive in the future. In fact, they will only get more expensive. So my, you know, my knee-jerk reaction is to say, "Well, I guess we need to go into the general fund to make up the difference, to make the project happen." But I want to do that with my eyes wide open, knowing how that impacts us on myriad of other projects that we're also doing under this biennial budget.
Mayor, council. Whereas Aaron could speak to the balance in the general fund, let me just comment that let's go through these projects, and we can bring back the specifics next week, on the 15th, when we plan on going through all our carryforwards, so we can give the council a full accounting of what we recommend we carry forward to be able to complete projects, as well as what the impact is on the general fund for the MOC and for the fire station. I would just comment at this point that with the full build-out of your MOC, we still have, and the council may or may not be aware of this, I've just become aware of it over the last few months, that in the effort to bring services inside, your signal crews and all of that that we were contracting with the county, there was no accommodation made and no forethought given for where those people are going to be housed, let alone where their equipment is housed. And they are currently finding shelter and office space in inappropriate locations at park buildings, some of which that don't have a restroom, so we bring in a porta potty. This is really unacceptable, and this is the time...I mean, your costs are certainly going up, but if I can wave the banner for bite the bullet now, because it's going to be harder to chew when a bigger bullet led down the road, we are behind in providing adequate facilities for the size of the city that's growing. And you've all seen it, you've been living with it. I've just been here a bit over a year. So I'll leave it at that. We'll bring back the...because you won't be making a decision tonight, but for to move forward, and you could give us direction and make your final decision upon hearing what the budget impacts are, but we can bring those back next week.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate being able to kind of look at that full picture so that we're making these decisions with eyes wide open. And I think, you know, the full council recognizes that the need is there. I don't think there's any question from myself or other council members on that need. It's just making decisions on the options laid out by staff for how we go about doing this, whether it's that phased approach, or whether it's just biting the bullet, doing the whole thing, and, you know, robbing our general fund to pay for this, but understanding that impact across the full spectrum. So I appreciate that that will kind of be done next week.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, thank you, actually, between...
Okay, before we start another round, yeah, I think most of my questions have been answered as well. I think back to some of the properties that we've had over time and along 228th and stuff that we've ended up turning over and using for other things, and I kind of look at them and go, "Oh, dear, we should have thought about that." Okay, so going back, Councilmember Ross, did you...looking back, did you have a question?
Yeah, I agree we should bite the bullet on this one. I think it's critical to our operations and maintaining our assets.
Yep, I think that's where everybody's going on this. Okay, so going back for round two here, Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. I just had a follow-on comment to what the city manager was saying, and that is, I was here for the original design and construction of this project, and I can guarantee you, we were not taking some of the things that Dave pointed out into account. And as we move to bring more and more stuff in-house as opposed to contracting for it, the analysis should say that we benefit by doing that anyway financially, which is a partial offset to the cost of what we're looking at here. My only comment, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, Anjali and Mr. City Manager, I don't know what the effort would be, but it might be helpful to have at least a rough estimate or order of magnitude in terms of the cost of not doing this, because if we are going to be comparing this to other projects, and there might be some doubt as to whether or not we're going to do this. and there might be some doubt as to whether or not we're going to do this work, I think it's going to be important to know how much we're, how much extra we're going to spend if we don't do this work. And I think, you know, just based on what I saw when we got the tour, of how much time literally staff has to spend just kind of moving vehicles around sometimes, just to get the right vehicles in the right place. It's incredibly time-consuming. I can't imagine how incredibly frustrating that is for staff to take a task that should take much less time and extend it just because you have to move things around. And then also the effect on the equipment that we are leaving out there. I think that would be helpful to have, at least just a rough order of magnitude of what that is, because I think that will be fairly substantial.
I don't think we need to have the staff spend time on something that we're not even, we don't have council members even going in that direction. Yeah, we can just say it's a lot, but we don't have anybody headed in that direction. So I hate to see staff spend time on that. Okay, is there any, any other questions? Okay. All right, next topic. Okay, so we've got, they're looking for a direction from us, so... No, they're just looking for kind of a direction. I...
I will take it from the council that you would like us to bring back the financial impacts on the general fund, but that you're favorable of us moving and presenting a possible package for adoption on the 15th.
That's where I am.
Thank you, we'll do that. You have that, Anjali? We'll talk about it tomorrow.
Yes.
Thank you, very good. I'll let you move on to your next major project.
Great, thank you. Okay, so the next up is...
Okay, so on to us.
Okay. Next up is Fire Station 82 feasibility study.
Thank you, Mayor. And the goal tonight was, you know, not to piecemeal our facilities projects, but just, you know, bring them together. So this next project, the Fire Station 82, we have completed a feasibility study, and we are going to report out on the findings of that. During the CIP discussions last year, we briefly discussed the need to improve the fire stations in Sammamish. And this fire station, along with Fire Station 83, handles the bulk of the calls for emergencies for our city. And built back in the 80s, they do not meet current building standards. And subsequently, a feasibility study for Fire Station 82 has been completed to verify if the structure can be renovated and approved, rather than replaced. For tonight's presentation, I'm joined by the city's consultant Eric Shire, Principal Architect at TCA Architects, and city staff Sebda Buran, the Senior Project Manager for Facilities. And at the end of our presentation, you will hear from Fire Chief Jeff Clark from Eastside Fire and Rescue as well. So with that, I'll walk you through the first few slides. Next slide, please. So the slide outline for tonight, you have the objective. We will summarize the 2018 Building Analysis Study for Fire Stations, and then discuss the findings of the 2021 Feasibility Study. We'll touch upon some sustainability options, and discuss budgets and estimates, as well as the timeline and next steps. Next slide, please. So the objective tonight is to hear from city councils to get your feedback on this feasibility study that we have just completed for Fire Station 82. Next slide. I'll hand it over to Eric to do the rest of the presentation.
Thank you, Anjali. Again, thank you, everybody, for the opportunity to talk about this project. Again, my name's Eric Shire. I'm one of the principals at TCA Architecture Office over in Seattle. Just in case you aren't aware, we specialize in doing fire stations. That's our thing, we've been doing it for many years. I started at the firm in 1994, so I've been basically specialized in fire stations since then. And our firm's been doing them even before that. So anyway, dispensing with those pleasantries, I'll jump right in here. So Fire Station 82, just in case anybody isn't aware, it's over on 228th Avenue, just south of northeast 19th Drive. You know where that is. I'm sure the council knows where the station is, but I figured for other people who might be listening. 34-year-old station, it's currently about 7,400 and some change square footage. There's a number of parking spaces there. It's considered a Type 5 non-rated, it's non-sprinklered, so it doesn't have a fire sprinkler in it. The building code that it was built under in 1985, so there isn't anything in the building that was done incorrectly or anything like that, we're certainly not saying that. So you can go ahead and go to the next one. Go to the next slide.
Went back to slide eight.
There we go. So in 2018, myself and my firm did a study on the three stations that you guys have. And the purpose of that was just to take a look at what you have, understand what the outstanding issues might be for each one, bring all the fire stations into compliance, like what would you have to do to bring that into compliance with the codes and regulations and things like that. And so a study was done that you guys have a copy of. Next slide, sorry. So out of that study, we looked at what the current building standards are now, what sort of American Disabilities Act or ADA standards, didn't it meet, what the fire codes are. I'm not going to read all the things that are up there, you can see it. But the key things for us in fire stations is things like separation between contaminated and clean spaces, whether or not there's physical fitness space in a desirable area in the station, and room for gear storage and things like that, because it'll deteriorate if it's not put in the right place. So next slide, please. So this year, so Fire Stations 82 and 83 are essentially very similar buildings, and they handle most of your calls. Station 82 was the best candidate, and so it was selected for the process that we've been going forward with in this renovation for the capital improvement plan that you guys already have in place. So we were hired to come do the feasibility study under the current conditions, current code and things like that, to renovate the building. Next slide. So in our study, the fire department's needs were evaluated, of course, and I think the chief can talk to this in more detail at the end of this. I understand he's going to be speaking. So essentially, we looked at the station, and the sleeping rooms currently are in one big room. That's not really ideal on a current fire station. So they need six single-occupant, gender-neutral sleeping rooms. And then we looked at, anytime you're doing a renovation, you have to start looking at ADA upgrades. What's the mechanical system? The mechanical system, it's functioning, but barely. And then, of course, electrical things, installing a fire sprinkler system. It's always a good idea in a fire station. And then upgrading the fire alarm, creating that gear storage I was talking about, getting the fitness room out of the apparatus bay, which is where it currently is sitting. Get restrooms up on the second floor, and essentially renovate that upper floor to accommodate the crew much better. Oh, let me, let me mention too, so currently, the way that the apparatus bay is heated is, the heating and stuff is run through the trench drains in the apparatus bay. So it's not ideal, certainly. You can imagine all of the stuff that goes into the drain. So as part of this project, even though we didn't really touch the apparatus bay in other ways, we did take a look at renovating that heating system and getting that out of the trench vein. So that is part of the things that we looked at that is going to be in the cost estimate that you'll see in a little bit. Next slide, sorry. I keep forgetting to say it. So this is what you have on the left, first floor plan. You can see that little pocket up on the top there, that's where the front door is. And to the right is the main meeting room. And then as you go left down the shaded, the shaded area is essentially what we renovated in the existing space. You can see that sleeping room over there, we've identified as one big room. There are partitions in there that are separating the staff, but for privacy, snoring, things like that, they just don't have that functioning. And then upstairs, where there's an existing dayroom and kitchen, things like that, that's also being completely renovated. Next slide. So again, this is what we're proposing to renovate the building with. Again, you can see the shaded areas, it's where we're doing the work. There's an entire sleeping wing that's being added onto the building, because there was just no other way to get it to work. We're updating the stairs so that they meet code, because they currently, when it was designed, the building was just fine, as I noted. But in today's times, the stairs don't meet the codes with the handrails and things like that. And so those are being updated. We're rearranging the bathrooms so that they're also upgraded. And then upstairs, the living and dayroom is being redone. The kitchens, again, it's functioning, but it's in, you know, it's a 34-year-old building, so you can imagine in firefighter world, that's pretty old for a kitchen. And then we're adding a restroom, new mechanical room upstairs. And then there's that shaded area where the outline is, is where there's an outside deck. Next slide. So that's generally what it looks like from one angle. We haven't colored the sleeping room area that you can see. That's essentially how it's added on to the building. And then to the left of that is where we added a new roof, because currently there wasn't space there, so we had to put a new roof on the building on that side. Next slide. So one thing we looked at was, in this day and age, anything that we do, I mean, if you just follow the code, essentially, there's a lot of sustainable things that you're going to end up doing to your building anyway. And so our project goals always focus on the health and safety first of the crew. As fire station architects, we understand response is a huge thing, so we take a close look at those kind of things. In the vision that you guys have from your 2011 Sustainability Vision Plan goals, we did take a look at how do you reduce, reuse, recycle, create natural habitat? I mean, there's all kinds of things outside the building itself that we looked at, how we conserve water, and even how do you foster a healthy neighborhood from this project? What sort of things do you bring in to your project? Thank you. Next slide. And sorry, I'm going really fast, if I am. I feel like I am. So, again, looking at the sustainability option, what's that?
I said, you're doing great.
Okay. Okay, thanks. In looking at what we're doing with this renovation, just renovating the building as opposed to just tearing it down is a very big sustainability thing. As you can imagine, there's a lot of components to this building, but there's really nothing wrong with them. So there's an aspect to building a brand-new building, of course, but reusing your existing one is a big sustainability item. Recycled materials, whatever we might use to bring into the station in terms of if there's floor finishes and things, there's lots of recycled materials that we would include. There's no plan, to my knowledge, that we're going to go after any sort of certification like a LEED program or anything like that. But we can still design sustainability into the project by just using the right materials. There, as again, part of the project, the mechanical system is going to get replaced in this building, that's being proposed anyway. And that will be a very high-efficient mechanical system. There'll be LED lights installed, things like that, which will naturally be much more sustainable in terms of how they operate, the energy they use. We've been talking about potentially adding electric vehicle charging stations. I have an electric car, and I go mountain biking up in your city. I think Doofy, is Doofy part of the city? I'm actually not sure of that, but it's close. I see a lot of electric cars up on the hill there, so I'm glad to see that. Anyway, in the building, just because it's, part of it is new. We're adding a new roof, we're putting in some new walls. They'll be heavily insulated, much more robustly than your existing building, of course. And things like low-flow plumbing fixtures and things like that. Next slide, please. So this is where it gets painful. I know you guys just, I listened to the previous presentation, and I saw the cost estimator talking about escalation. We obviously see that as well. So this is, if you look at the right-hand side there, at the total, that $3,560,488 and some change is kind of what you would expect the contractor to bid, we estimate for this renovation. The rest of the costs are what's called soft costs, which are all the other stuff. So if you have to buy furniture, all the testing and inspection that needs to be, get done. The crew's going to have to move out of this building. There's no way we're going to be able to have them occupy this facility while we're tearing out the inside of it. So there's probably going to be some sort of trailers on the site. And thankfully, your site's big enough to accommodate that, we believe. And then contingencies and things like that. So you can see how this adds up to, as was mentioned earlier, it's just under $6 million, which I know is more money than you had planned on originally. Yeah, so I'm just looking at the left-hand side of the slide there. So we're anticipating construction sometime in 2023. Next slide, please. Some things that we did look at that are not included in the project, but we felt it was worth at least bringing them up for the council to consider, is taking a look at sort of higher insulated panels. There's a potential that if you're going to do this remodel, maybe there's an option to remove more of the existing building. It's got a lot of brick on it and things like that. And so what would, what would it take to remove that and put more insulated walls in there? Get more special daylighting? Even going as far as to doing rooftop solar panels, like PV, to increase power, to make electricity for your facility? And there's even an option to be able to sell that back. But we won't get into all the details of that tonight, obviously. And then going with, we have a flat roof proposed over the sleeping area, that there's a potential that we could put a green roof up there. And that, again, lowers the energy cost of the project. Low-impact development of the landscaping, so it might be that we take a look at native vegetation on your site, and low watering, be able to get rid of any sort of water that you guys might need in the future. We know climate change is an issue, and you might be able to save some money on water as you move forward. The other thing that Teresa, our sustainability consultant, brought up when we were meeting together was this idea of community connection via the public outreach. And so I thought that was a great idea. I hadn't really thought about that. I mean, how many fire stations have I done? And I've never really thought of it in that way. Teresa, do you want to mention that real quick? What your idea was about that? I know you're here somewhere.
Hi, yes, I'm here, up in the group. I mean, there's a couple of things that we talked about. Even something as simple as a new electronic reader board outside that lets the fire station or the city communicate with passersby, using the community education room to feature public outreach events, or, you know, working in some kind of project in the exterior landscaping. There are really lots of options, and, you know, maybe, you know, may or may not be necessarily tied to the construction itself, but it was just something we wanted to mention as a team.
Yeah, thank you. You can go to the next slide. So I think we would be remiss if we at least didn't talk about new construction. The current building, when we had our structural engineer take a look at it, he was actually saying that even though it's 34 years old, it doesn't, it wouldn't meet current... saying that even though it's 34 years old, it doesn't, it, it wouldn't meet current code, but there's also nothing really wrong with it. It's essentially, fire stations now in the current code are classified as essential facilities. So when there's an event, whether it be, you know, 120 mile-an-hour wind or some kind of earthquake or something, heaven forbid, that that is kind of the last building standing, right? Because they have to be able to come out and help all the rest of us. So the building needs to be functioning. And so that's, that's the purpose of calling it an essential facility. It has to meet a higher standard. So a new building will be much more robust in that sense. It will survive a much bigger earthquake, things like that. New buildings and fire stations. And again, you, you guys know this. You were just talking about your previous project. Building, saying something's going to be around for 50 years, physically it will be, but there's a lot to change in electronics and things like that happen that make buildings sort of need to be upgraded as you go. And that's something that we always think about when we're doing either this renovation or a new project is where can it expand? We want to make sure that we leave room for that as we move forward. Apparatus bays are a huge part of that. One of the things in this project, in the renovation, we are not touching the apparatus bay other than the mechanical system in the floors, I mentioned. And I know that the chief will probably talk about this, that the ceiling in that apparatus bay is very low. We would, we would not design a new fire station with a ceiling that low. They cannot stand on the top of it. And then what happens is that you end up having to spend money on fire trucks that fit that station because they won't fit in it otherwise. So there's compromises that get made in terms of that. And a brand-new building, of course, would be more, have a lot more space in the apparatus bay than, than you currently have. Getting more training rooms, and that could be not only for the department, the fire folks themselves, but also you as a community, have the potential to have a larger meeting room to serve your public. That's something that we look at in any of the fire stations that we do. The improved energy efficiency, clearly, we're going to be doing that in the renovation, but with an entire building, you can take a different look at that and what that means and the options that you have to ensure that you're meeting a higher standard even than the code oftentimes. As I mentioned, looking at things like photovoltaics and solar and stuff, it's going to be easier to design for in a new facility because we can slope the roof in the right direction and make sure we don't have trees blocking it in terms of shade and la, 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 la. So, uh, next slide, I think is you, Angelie.
Yes, thank you. So in terms of the budgets versus the estimates, is, in, last year, when we talked about this project, we had, we hadn't signed, we started this whole feasibility study. We didn't know what it was going to cost. So what we had is an allowance. And that allowance was $2.75 million for a renovation without any plans being drawn up, and this was prior to this study. Now that we've completed the study, you've seen that the estimate is around $6 million, and that includes everything, your design taxes and contingencies, as well as a good amount of sustainability options. And it also factors in a 5% increase in costs per year. So we've tried to account for just about everything, and we think $6 million is a real number. In terms of timeline, we anticipate the construction start in 2023. Next slide, please. So here is a little more detail to the timeline. If what you see tonight looks good to council, then we will come back in the fall with a design contract. And then it will take about a year to go through the design and permitting phase for this project. We would hope to bid and award the project in spring of 2023 and have construction run from summer of 2023 through the spring of 2024. Next slide, please. So those essentially would be your next steps, to approve a design contract in the fall. And additional funding would need to be added for this project in the next biennial budget cycle. And obviously, you know, with this cost going up, we're going to see the same for Station 83. So Station 83 costs will, it's, it's almost an exact building. The site work actually is a little more involved. So the, but the cost will be around this. We will try and get a head start on that sooner so that we don't proportionately delay that. Initially, we had planned to build the renovations to 82 in this budget cycle and then the renovations to Fire Station 83 in the next budget cycle. And we'll try and get them closer in timeline so we aren't delaying the renovations to Fire Station 83. With that, I will request Chief Knopf to add any comments before we open the top of questions.
All right, good evening, council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I, I don't want to repeat everything that was stated. I just want to give a, a quick history of, of what I first asked of the city in 2017, was to upgrade these two stations to the basic minimum of what fire stations are now when it comes to firefighter safety. And namely, the, the workout areas, get them out of the bays so that our people, when they're working out for a healthier life and a longer career, are not breathing in diesel exhaust and the other contaminants that we bring in from the jobs that, that we do. And that our sleeping quarters would be gender neutral rather than common bunk areas. And since the pandemic has come in, obviously, the common bunk areas changes the, the eligibility even more because these firefighters are sharing the same air overnight as, as they're spending time in the station. And it is, while common bunks were, were common in the 70s, 80s, and 90s, they have been outdated since the 90s. And as we have diversified our workforce over the last five years specifically, and added many women to the, to the workforce, these two stations present specific challenges to us, not only in their bedroom layouts, but their bathroom layouts. And then, of course, that opens up the ADA issues that were brought to attention. And then there's a very unique, and for me, the first day that I walked into these stations, a very unpleasant fact about these two stations, for whatever reason, they were designed as two stories and no restrooms were put on the second floor. So it, while that might sound like a minor inconvenience, the majority of the workday is spent on the second floor, and there are no restrooms in, in that specific area. So those are the things that I asked the city to address back in 2017. We've now been through two studies. I've briefed several city managers on this, and as Angelie already explained, several directors on, on moving forward with this. And I have appreciated the support that this is getting programmed. It was programmed for this budget cycle and then Station 83 for the next budget cycle. But as things happen, I certainly understand dollars. I certainly understand the expense side of things. But I, I also have to advocate and, and, and speak for the best practices within the fire service and for the minimum standards that our firefighters are working in, which is why we started advocating for this in 2017. And I would certainly appreciate the support in getting these two projects done as quick as we possibly can and understanding the need from the end user there. And with that, I will be on for any questions or anything you'd like me to do, dig in deeper into. Certainly would, would expand, but I think there's been a pretty adequate overview of the project to this point.
Okay, great. First of all, I remember watching that station get built and, I don't know, 1987 didn't seem that old to me. Okay, so Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. Jeff, good to see you again. I have several thoughts on this. First of all, after listening to the, this and the last presentation, we should take preliminary cost estimates and double them for working numbers. That seems to be the trend we're seeing lately. I chuckled over the 30-year-old kitchen thing because we just got redone, redoing our kitchen for the first time in 30 years. We didn't spend nearly this much money on it, I gotta tell you that. But my wife is delighted with the, with the results. The, my feeling is we need to take a look at all three fire stations and look at what needs to be done and whether the fire stations we have are in the right place. If we're going to build a brand-new place, let's make sure it's where we really want it, not where it necessarily has been. I like 82 where it is. I think it's well-placed. I'm not so sure about 81 or 83. But the, and we may need an 84, frankly. But the, the issue is, I think the workplace, living quarters are probably in dire need of upgrading. If the last two years didn't convince you, I don't know what will. With the, with the whole issue and, you know, COVID-19 is not the first time we've been through, we've been through SARS, we've been through Asian flu. Seems to be about every few years, we hit a cycle of something. If we do do the modification, I think there's certain things we can look at. The 200K for furniture fixtures and equipment, to me, seemed high. There are lots of fire stations around the country, Boston, New York, Chicago, where the buildings are a whole lot older and they have functional equipment. We, several years ago, sent Sevde Baran into 82 in response to a request from Eastside Fire to basically do a bunch of what's requested here. And she came back with a much simpler package, which was deemed acceptable by both sides. I'm, I'm not sure Sevde's up to doing it again, but I would suggest we take a very close look at this particular proposal, but also considering what needs to be done in the other fire stations as well. I'm not sure we can afford to rebuild all three and do a fourth because that would break the bank. The fact is, though, that these are also important community resources from the standpoint of meetings. If there's something in sumamis that's short of, short of capability, that's public meeting spots. And we have a, a need for public places. So the conference rooms have to stay, and if we can expand them, that's all to the good. That's my two bits for right now. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yeah, thank you so much. Couple of questions. One, if we do this renovation, well, not if, we'll have to do something, obviously, but for the renovations, how long will the buildings last if we do this renovation?
That is a great question. And Eric, we did talk to him about it, and he anticipated about, we'd get it about 30 years out of it. Eric would, is that about right?
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, one thing I, I do want to, sorry for interrupting you, Commissioner Stewart, or Council. I, too many fire departments, I guess, right, Chief? One thing I, I want to make sure is, I, I agreed with everything that Chief said. One thing that's nice is, is that the sleeping room itself is brand-new. And so that area, as he mentioned, really is one of the key components of this project, as well as things upstairs. All of the stuff that we're doing is brand-new. This is not a, a typical band-aided renovation. We're really trying to improve the environment by which the crew is living and working in that facility. And so a lot of the stuff that we're doing in there, as I mentioned, Councilmember Odell, I, I get it, we've renovated our kitchen here at home and it was the best thing we ever did. Firefighters and emergency responders live and work in the same place. And so the, the kitchens, and I, I don't know if you've been in a few fire stations that are more modern, but they have very robust equipment. If you buy a $350 residential dishwasher, it's going to be toast in two months because it has to be able to turn off when they get a call, all kinds of things like that. You cannot leave it running when they leave because everybody just gets up and leaves. And so you just have to have that sort of thing. So I, I'm only rambling on about all of that because it's, it's not a regular house, and that's why it's so expensive. And it, it seems unreal to me, too. I'm, like I said, I've been doing this a long time, too. We used to be able to do these for 100 a square foot. So the lot, that was a very long answer to the question about how long this is going to last. But I, I think that's why it's 30 years. It's just because, like I said, that a lot of the stuff that we're doing to it is brand-new.
Yeah, no, 30 years is a great answer. That was definitely longer than I had expected, so that's excellent news. You did make a comment that the current building doesn't meet current standards. Obviously, we'd be bringing a lot of things up to standard, but will renovating the current building, will it be able to? I'm sure someone came off and moved there. Will renovating the current building bring it up to standards for things like earthquakes? That was mentioned. And making sure that in, in an emergency like an earthquake, that the fire station will still be standing?
Currently, the, the stuff that we're doing, like the, a pick on the sleeping rooms, all of that will be up to current code. So if there's an earthquake, they might want to run into the sleeping room. So, so, because that, that will be the strongest component. But we are not planning on taking out support to the walls or redoing foundation connections or any of that sort of thing. As I mentioned, we're not touching the apparatus bay. So whatever connections are made between the, the framing of that and the walls and the walls and the footing, which is normally where you look at anchoring things for improving structural integrity in an earthquake, we're, we're not planning on doing anything to that.
Okay. You also mentioned that because the bay, the bays are smaller than what new buildings are these days. A couple of questions when we think about Eastside Fire and Rescue. One, do the fire trucks that we would have to purchase to fit in these buildings, will they potentially cost us more? And Chief, does this create some challenges with, you know, your ability to potentially, you know, use equipment across your entire service area? Or is that not really a factor?
And I, I appreciate the question and the concern. Frankly, we, we're going to be able to buy the vehicles we need to work across our service area. It causes us some inconveniences inside the structure when our people are working on the rigs up on top. But I would say that those inconveniences don't outweigh a $6 to $8 million delta. So I think that is a fair exchange.
Excellent. The other question, I know you said that you're not going to try to take this building to become like a lead or anything. Did you guys actually do the business case to say, if we did all of the sustainability, the potential sustainability upgrades, right? If we added solar, if we make sure that we upgrade the electrical so that in, because I would imagine in 30 years, we're going to have EVs, right? At, at a minimum, all of the support vehicles will likely be electric, if not most or all of the, the fire trucks at that point. So if we look at that in totality, did, did we compare the cost of doing that now during this renovation and what that payback would be over a 30-year lifespan? Because, you know, if I think about like solar and some of the more, I don't know if aggressive is the right term, but more aggressive, you know, rainwater harvesting and maybe even, you know, brown water systems or something like that, that those can really save a lot of money, especially if you have a 30-year horizon to recuperate those costs. Did we do that full-on business case to really compare that?
Councilmember Stewart, we did discuss that briefly, but it, and I see, Teresa, you've turned your video on, so I'll let you speak next. We, you know, found that it's going to take a lot more study and analysis to do that, to come up with those numbers. So it's not something we can do at this feasibility stage. And what we did want to be careful is, we started out with, you know, with an allowance of $2.75 million for a renovation versus a new building. We're roughly at $6 million. And so we, you know, we, I think there is going to be a point at which it is an optimal cost. And, you know, we don't keep putting more cost at it for sustainability because at that point, there may come a time when you might as well just rebuild. And some of these things, we think can be afforded over time as well. Like, you know, we don't show the solar panels now, but it's possible those could be added in a few years, budget allowing at a later date. But we also have to keep in mind that we're tackling two fire stations, and so we wanted to be conscious of that. Teresa, did you want to add to that?
I was just going to add that the energy code may trigger, at the very least, I was just going to add that the energy code may trigger, at the very least, putting the conduit in for future PV, even if rooftop solar doesn't make it into this phase. And also, just going to add that for things like, you know, solar panels and other energy efficiency features, a lot of those could pay back within the thirty-year timeline. And PV, rooftop solar panels often pay back in under ten years these days, because the cost of solar has come down so much while energy costs keep escalating. And then other features, such as, you know, water, rainwater harvesting and things like that, those have a longer payback, sometimes more like fifty years in the case of rainwater harvesting. And cost is generally not the driver for using those features. It's more about environmental conservation and stewardship and other, you know, missions that, that an entity or city would, would have as a priority.
Excellent. Well, I, I would just throw in there that, Anjali, I appreciate you not wanting to drive the, the cost up, but particularly around things like the, the wiring and the, and the solar. And as we look at potentially converting more vehicles to electric, the solar actually starts to accelerate its payback period, because your, your demands are higher. So, I, I think, you know, personally, I think that that's a worthwhile thing to look at, that, you know, we, we may spend a little bit more money this year, or, you know, in 2023, when we do the renovation. But if it pays back in six or seven years, and then you have twenty-three years of, you know, lower costs, it can, it can actually make a big dent over the long term in, in the overall cost of, of the upgrades. So, just something to think about. I, I think that's really important. And then, as Teresa mentioned, you know, just our stewardship. We, we, we talk a good game about wanting to protect the environment, doing some of these things on facilities like fire stations, where fire stations are resource-intensive, right? I mean, they use a lot of electricity, they use a lot of water. Making them as environmentally efficient and friendly as possible can have a lot of other benefits as well. One other question, would this, I don't know what kind of heat is in the fire station today. Is it, does it use fossil fuels, natural gas, to heat it?
Eric, did you want to say something?
You know, we did the study, and off the top of my head, I can't remember. I'm, I'm almost positive it's got some sort of natural gas.
Yes, I, I believe it does.
Yeah.
So, is that something we've looked at removing, is removing the fossil fuel element and, and converting to heat pumps, which again, has a, a huge positive environmental impact from, from the sustainability and getting rid of the, the negative impacts of the fossil fuels? Was that, I can't remember in, in your presentation if that was included or not included in this package.
I, I can tell you that, so I, I don't remember specifically what the unit was that our mechanical engineer is proposing to use in this, but it would not be significant, maybe that's the word I'll use. It wouldn't be significant enough to go to an electric unit if you did have a high-efficiency gas one. And, and again, to, to your point, Pam, I think that there's a potential that that could be run by free resources in the future, even if they're not put in today. Teresa's correct, it's very easy and insignificant, again, to run conduit up to the, to the top of the roof, especially the new one we're putting on, even though it's facing the wrong way. So, that, that was the, the point, is that the, the PVs on this particular roof would need to go on the south side somewhere, and that is not what we're working on. That, that's where the apparatus bay is. So, we'd have to take a look at that. And, and we haven't done any, just to be clear to, to Council, we haven't done any significant studies about using those elements. And I would agree with Anjali and the Chief, we want to make sure we don't derail any more than, than our current economy is already doing. We don't want to derail this project by putting things in that potentially might cause it to cost even more. But we did want to have a responsibility for making sure that we brought up with you what those things are. And, and again, Teresa was brought on board to take a look at all of that stuff. But we haven't done any significant studies to understand what those cost savings might be, what the impacts are.
Okay. I would love to see the numbers, because, you know, even if we had to, say, borrow the money to cover the additional costs, it's quite possible that, you know, at year fifteen, we're making money, because, you know, we, we've hit the payback period. And I think that that is, that's good governance, right? If we can make good long-term decisions, not just good short-term decisions. And that doesn't even factor in the opportunity costs of, you know, the, the eliminating negative impacts to the environment, which we'll just pay to clean up later. So, those, those opportunity costs are huge, and they're never factored into these construction projects. So, I would encourage us to, to take the lead on that and to really look at that. But to Chief Clark, I, I do not want to derail this. Just to be clear, I'm a thousand percent in support of, you know, upgrading to get these facilities up, up to the standards that your, your folks need to be able to, to function and be safe, and to have, you know, at least the basic comforts that one needs when they're spending those kind of hours in a fire station. All right, thank you.
Well, Chief, first I wanted to thank you for working with the high school kids we sent your way, and having them involved in helping with the, working on the environmental aspect of this whole thing. I know that they gave some, some great input, and probably some long hours to you, but, so, thank you for kind of taking them under your wing and taking their input on this. I wanted to, I fully support, though I watched the station go in, you know, thirty-four years ago. I also watched everything on that north end be built around it, and quickly watched that station be, become way too small for the area. So, it is a station that needs to be revamped probably as quickly as we can. But that being said, I also think, as we move forward on this station, we probably should look at the location of those other stations and, and before we move forward on those, and maybe if we could, you know, do a superstation and combine two, or at least look at the locations of where they're at, I think that would be definitely worth our time. But that's, that's my thoughts. But on this one, I definitely think we need to move forward as quickly as possible. And I wanted to give you a special thanks for working with those high schoolers. I know they enjoyed working with you on the environmental end, and, and they, they had a, a good time doing so. So, next up would be Councilmember Trine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Anjali, good job. Chief Clark, thank you very much for all that you and your staff does for the community in keeping us safe. Please, Anjali, in my opinion, I think you need to negotiate a design contract, and I look forward when you bring that back to the City Council for our approval. I think as far as the funds, we, we definitely, that'd be on the City Manager and, and our CFO, Aaron Anton, about how we're going to fund this. But we need to start looking at revenue sources and how we're going to fund it. But I look forward to having those conversations and finding revenues available, so we can fund this project and move it forward. So, thanks, thank you very much for your time and effort tonight. And back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other comments for anybody on staff? For Chief? Awesome.
So, so Mayor, we will work on this project, I get, for the concurrence of the Council, and bring back a, move forward with putting together a contract for design, and bringing back whatever efficiencies we can find. And then we will continue to look at budget alternatives. And we'll see you soon with that project.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, and with that, we have had a request for a five-minute health and safety break. So, we will see everybody back in five minutes for a health and safety break. Okay, and we are back. And the first thing I'm looking for is for Mr. Trine, Councilmember Trine.
Yeah, make a motion that we extend the meeting to
And I'm looking for a second. Okay, we have a first and a second to extend the meeting to eleven-thirty. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye? Aye.
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 Closed?
Aye.
All right. Moving forward. Okay, the next up, we have got the Urban Forests Three Management Strategic Implementation. Ah, that's a mouthful. Okay, it's a mouthful at ten-thirty. I'm going to try it one more time. Urban Forest Management Strategic Implementation Plan. There you go. David Pyle.
Hello, Mayor Rand, this is Kelly, deputy director of yes, I will be introducing this topic. And I feel your pain a little anxious, but I also will mispronounce some things as well as the evening continues on. But with that said, I do want to say good evening. Joining me tonight is senior management analyst, Evan Fisher, who will be presenting the Urban Forest Management Strategic Implementation Plan, or the SIP for short. The SIP implements the goals and policies of the Urban Forest Management Plan, which was adopted back in 2019. Our goal this evening is to seek your input on the SIP, with the hope that your feedback and guidance will bring us one step closer to an approved plan. Approving the SIP will set into motion specific work plan actions that will officially establish the city's urban forest management program, a first for the city. With that, I will now hand it over to Evan to start our presentation.
Thank you, Kelly, and thank you, City Council. Good evening, my name is Evan Fisher, and I am a senior management analyst with DCD. And tonight, I will be walking you through the said Strategic Implementation Plan. During the presentation, I'll provide a brief overview of what the Urban Forest Management Plan is and how it was created, before shifting gears to the Strategic Implementation Plan, or SIP, the three tools within the SIP, and the twenty-one, 2021, 2022 Urban Forest Management Work Plan. To help frame tonight's presentation and conversation, I want to cover the two main questions before the City Council. The first is, does the City Council approve of the Planning Commission's recommended Urban Forest Management Strategic Implementation Plan, including the 2122 Urban Forest Management Work Plan? And second, does the City Council recommend any additional changes or updates? As many of you will remember, the Urban Forest Management Plan is a policy guide for managing, enhancing, and growing trees in the city over the next twenty years. It brings all urban forestry work activities under one vision and set of policies, and promotes a shared vision of the urban forest and offensive collaboration. The UFMP was adopted into the city's comprehensive plan in 2019, and it was developed through data collection, through data collection and inventorying, extensive community engagement, and research analysis, which resulted in setting goals and objectives that work, that work towards achieving the vision of the UFMP. The vision is to balance our community responsibilities of environmental stewardship with the necessities of human endeavor. The UFMP's goals and objectives are set around three broad areas that work towards realizing that vision. Those areas are urban forest sustainability, which aims to, which aims to improve the urban forest resource, efficiency in municipal operations, which will drive improvements in city policy and practices, and align efforts with city departments around urban forestry work, and community collaboration and engagement, which will build a stronger community, which will build stronger community engagement and participation in urban forest stewardship. All that brings us to where we are currently, which is the implementation and performance measures phase of the Urban Forest Management Program. This is where the rubber, where the rubber meets the road, and where we start to realize the vision of the UFMP. We do, we do this by utilizing the Strategic Implementation Plan. The SIP is how we make the goals and objectives of the UFMP actionable. The SIP guides urban forestry work within the city by utilizing three tools. The first is the Implementation Strategies Matrix, which is used to create biannual staff work plans, whose progress is tracked and reported on in the annual State of the Urban Forest Report. I will go over each of these tools in more detail in the coming slides. The first tool is the Implementation Strategies Matrix. The matrix is a comprehensive list of all the proposed implementation actions, which have been sorted under the appropriate goals and objectives. I want to take a moment to quickly walk you through the matrix and show you how it works, as there's a lot of information to digest. First, as highlighted in red, we see the reference numbers. To date, there are one hundred and fifty-nine individual implementation actions, and the reference numbers allow us to quickly communicate and navigate through the matrix. Next, you'll see the goals and objectives, which comes straight from the UFMP. Again, these were adopted in 2019 into the city's comprehensive plan, and are currently not under consideration for review. As there could be a number of implementation actions working to achieve each goal and objective, you'll notice that the goals and objectives will be repeated in the matrix. Here, for example, we see goal UA1, objective A, has three implementation actions, therefore objective A is repeated three times. Next are the implementation actions themselves. These are the individual work plan actions that will be included on staff work plans, and are the concrete steps for implementing the goals and objectives of the UFMP. The group column indicates which work plan cycle the action should be implemented in. I will go over how actions have been grouped in the coming slides. The timeframe column estimates how long implementing each action will take. Investment estimates the total cost of implementation on a low, medium, and high scale. Grant opportunity and partnership opportunities indicates whether the city may be able to find grant funding, or partner with another jurisdiction or organization. The department column is a preliminary estimate of which department will include the action on their work plan, depending on the department's work plan and staff capacity. And lastly, source identifies where the implementation action originated. As you may know, the matrix was developed by collecting implementation actions suggested by the Planning Commission, City Council, Public during the development of the UFMP, as well as the annual docket process. Additionally, our consultant, David Resource Group, conducted extensive interviews with city staff, and recommended a list of actions to be included. I think this simple bucket graphics helps to illustrate how the Implementation Strategies Matrix is meant to work. It is a living document which will act as a repository for implementation actions. Any new implementation actions that come along will go in the bucket. As work plans are developed, these actions will be pulled from the bucket, bucket, and put into work plans as they align with the group theme, which I'll be talking more about The second tool of the SIP are the Biannual Urban Forest Management Work Plans. These work plans will be staff's guide to urban forestry work each year. The plans will be developed to align with the biannual budget cycle, and will be constructed using implementation actions from the matrix. The work plan parameters will be established based on the adopted urban forestry budget, staff capacity, and the policy goals of the City Council. The biannual work plans are constructed use, excuse me, let me start that one again. The biannual work plans are constructed using the implementation action grouping framework. The grouping framework created the implementation sequencing, which we believe will successfully develop and maintain the urban forestry management program over the coming years. That sequence, as you can see, is establish the program, build it, strengthen it, and optimize it. To help us visualize how the grouping framework works, I wanted to bring back our lovely bucket, which is full of one hundred and fifty-nine implementation actions. Here, our groups are represented by watering cans. Again, remember that each group, or watering can in this case, aligns with a biannual work plan, and is built around the grouping theme. Staff, with the help of Planning Commission, have filled up each of the watering cans with actions from the bucket. One thing to note is that the amount of water, or number of actions each can can hold, is determined by the urban forestry budget allocated by the City Council and staff capacity. That said, group, the group one can has been filled with actions that will establish the urban forest management work program, group two with actions that will build it, three with actions that will strengthen it, and four with those that will optimize the plan. To make things more digestible and much easier to communicate, staff then took the full watering cans of implementation actions and grouped similar actions together to create group action types, which you can see here. For example, the action type of inventorying analysis you see in group one refers to all of the inventorying and analysis implementation actions in the watering can. By creating these groups, we are more easily able to discuss the work being completed in the work plan, as opposed to having to go through each action individually. While most action types have been sorted under one of While most action types have been sorted under one of the four groups, some action types will be ongoing and will occur in every group. Examples of those are action types like tree planting on public property, staffing volunteer training, or the state of the urban forest report. It is important to note that to date, only the Group 1 actions have been funded as the City Council has allocated $150,000 for urban forestry work in '21 and '22. The work in all other groups will be dependent on future funding from the City Council during the budget processes. Before we move on, I will focus our attention on Group 1, as these action types will be what make up our 2122 Urban Forest Management Work Plan. The action types in Group 1 are what staff will be able to accomplish, given the approved budget and current staffing capacity, and will work towards establishing the urban forest management work program. It is important to remember that on top of completing action types like inventory and analysis and updating city contracts, staff will also be engaging in ongoing action types like community outreach and education, budget planning, and tree planting on public property. This scatter chart displays an estimate of when actions will occur over the next few years. Here we can see when Group 1 actions will begin and a rough blocking of how long each action will take. The important things to note here are that there are actions from Group 2 that will have lead time that blends into Group 1, which we can see with code policy updates, tree board research and reporting, entry permitting process, early research. This will ensure that by the time Group 2 rolls around, the work to establish those actions will have been completed, so we can hit the ground running in Group 2. It's also worth noting that the ongoing actions are just that, they're ongoing. Again, they will occur in all four groups, which is represented here. You can also see how the State of the Urban Forest Report will fall annually in the final quarter of each year. That brings us to the third and final two of the SIP, which is the State of the Urban Forest Report. The State of the Urban Forest Report will be prepared and delivered annually and will account for progress that has been made in urban forestry work in the previous year. It will serve as an opportunity to assess work plan progress, track metrics, and adjust the coming year's work plan to align with policy shifts or to better achieve work plan goals. For your reference, included in the Agenda Bill is a link to an example of a similar report from the city of Portland. With that, we are ready to shift gears to City Council feedback and discussion. And to get us started, we're happy to take any general questions you may have, or we can dive into the first question for the City Council, which is, does the City Council approve of the Planning Commission's recommended Urban Forest Management Strategic Implementation Plan, including the 2122 Urban Forest Work Plan? And Madam Mayor, I totally agree, that's a mouthful.
Especially at this time of night, absolutely. Okay, well, great presentation. Wow, there's lots of questions. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Trine, because I know he had a lot going into this. So I'm gonna start with Councilmember Trine.
Okay, so how much of this implementation would be about conservation of trees? Because the goal, and here's why the reason for my question is, right? Because the goal is to have 48% of the tree canopy be around by 2050, for the future, right? So my thought is, is that the key here is then conservation. We have some big trees that provide good canopy. So how much of the implementation that Group 1, 2, 3, 4 is about conservation?
Sure, that's a really good question. Kelly, I'll take a first pass at it, and then I'll pass it over to you. So as far as conservation goes, really what the city can control are what are happening with the public trees. And so those will be trees in city parks, as well as public right of ways. And I think part of managing our urban forest is conserving our urban forest and making sure that, you know, how we treat our public trees has a mind towards conservation. I think as far as how we promote conservation on public property and our cities privately, sorry, private property and our cities privately own trees will be through our education and outreach programs, and making people aware of how to maintain trees through their full life cycle, how to identify landmark and heritage trees on their properties. Also, you know, future actions could include inventorying those landmark and heritage trees, so we can help protect those resources. Kelly, I'll turn it over to you for anything to add.
Yeah, I definitely think conservation through private property would be in center programs. It would be working with homeowners associations to increase canopy and forest health, looking at neighborhood matching grants to increase canopy and neighborhoods where canopy is needed. So not only is it conserving, it's restoring. And that is a theme that is common through all 150-plus implementation strategies, for sure. I think to really kick this off would be during the next comp plan update, where we consider a tree canopy percentage and establish a goal in our comprehensive plan. Right now, I believe our canopy coverage is 48%. That's very high for urban cities like Sammamish. But it's a great goal, and it's one that we should, you know, consider working with. So I would encourage the City Council to consider adopting a canopy coverage percentage and then policies that are reflected as part of the implementation strategy, as part of the UFMP, not only to conserve, but to restore and to manage. They all work hand in hand.
So Kelly, so that to me would lead me to Group 2 then. That's code and policy. And then in 2024, we'd be looking at the comp plan. So is that what the
Right.
The implementation that we're talking about here is that that would be more in Group 2, which would happen in 2023, 2024, if the council were to fund it. So then on Group, so then take me to Group 1, and do the $150,000 that we have, do we have the money? If we do the inventory and analysis, do we have the money set aside for the staffing to put it into GIS? Into the GIS? Or is that something we're gonna, in addition to the comp plan, when it comes to budget time?
No, the $150,000 would really cover the inventory and analysis and the mapping of that information. So the inventory would be the inventory of our trees, sorry, our public right-of-way street trees. We would be building off the 2017 LIDAR work that was done by Public Works. And what this scope of work would include would be having arborists evaluate each of those trees, providing that assessment, so this would be the tree type, its size, its health, and all other relevant information that we can incorporate into our asset management system that can be used to inform maintenance and operation planning, emergency management, evacuation routes, and general maintenance of our street trees. The second part of that is doing an analysis of all arborist reports that have been submitted to the city of Sammamish. This is a resource we already have, it's in our permit files. And reviewing those reports and mapping known instances of tree disease, such as laminated root rot, so that we can, and that would be also incorporated into GIS. And that helps better inform policy, code updates, all the way down to review comments with a building application or plaque. You know, so a developer may want to propose, you know, replacement trees that really aren't appropriate in an area that is known for laminated root rot. We really want to be proactive and to really establish the urban forest management program. Doing this type of inventory and analysis is going to pay dividends. Some of that $150,000 will be a review of our public works, our parks, and industry standard city contracts and specifications, to make sure they are referencing the right, you know, construction references, that they are all up to date to industry standards. I would say the remaining work, a little bit towards the tree website updates, budget, would go to that. But a lot of this is about between what could be done in-house with resources today. DCD has definitely worked into their work program for the remainder of '21 and '22 to take on some of these in-house tasks. And then the ones that I mentioned, for the inventory and analysis, the city contracts, website. That is what that $150,000 will go towards. Sorry, stumbling over my own words.
So, thank you. So the other part then is on the tree board research and reporting. And I noticed on the work plan that that actually trails into 2023. And then the tree board is placed in Group 2, which looks like it almost pushes it out to 2024. What, so I have a problem with that. Because I personally think that a tree board is a really good idea, and if we do the research and the reporting on it, why wouldn't we then establish it? And I mean, that's the plan. So the suggestion here is, or the question is, can I move the work plan so that that happens sooner? And then, of course, again, it's a budget issue too, right? Because that's gonna require, if I have a tree board, I'm gonna have to have a staff that's gonna have to be able to manage it.
Manage it. Exactly, and that's what we anticipate with that one tree board research and reporting, is that we would come to City Council as part of your consideration of the '23 and '24 budget and provide options for the council to consider when it comes to a tree board. You hit it right there on the head of the nail. Having another board or a commission requires additional staffing. And the type of staffing really needs to be technically appropriate. The city arborists, for example, manage that board. One thing also to consider, and this is a high priority for Planning Commission as well, so I totally understand the need. The Urban Forest Management Program, even though DCD is shepherding this process through legislative review, it really is of interest to all departments within the city. And that we want to make sure as a group with the departments that we work together to provide City Council with those options to consider. I know some early thoughts were, oh, this should fall under the Planning Commission, or, oh, this should fall under the Parks Commission. And really, you know, this needs to be a standalone board, because it does represent all departments. That's just my two cents on that. But again, we would come back with research as far as the budget cycle for '23, '24, and present those options in the, you know, the budget to do so, so that we can kick off a board in '23.
Sorry, so you think you could kick off the board in 2023? Is that what you just said?
Depending on what option you go in the direction, yeah, can't forget that.
Yeah, if it's funded. Okay, so I'm an approval. I like the Planning Commission's recommendation. I like their four groups. I think they've done, I mean, hats off to the Planning Commission, by the way, and who's Evan. Good job, Evan. I think there's some challenges that I have and other council members might have with the Urban Forest Management Plan itself. But we get to address those at a different time. This is specifically about the Forest Management Strategic Implementation Plan, or the SIP. And I would just say that this is a good document and something that the council should approve. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have got Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, I'm just gonna kind of echo. So just to be clear, this is not really about our feelings about the Urban Forestry Management Plan itself, which I looked at very carefully and had a lot of issues with. This is really about just pulling the trigger and implementing the plan, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes, okay, was that a yes?
Oh, yes, that's correct. I'm not sure if I kept up there, but yes.
You kind of froze there, it looks like on my screen anyway. So, okay, so if the details are already set, the plan is already passed, and everything is already figured out, you're basically just saying, can we start the, implement the plan now, is that correct?
Evan, do you want to take this one over, or do you have to?
Sure, I'm happy, sorry, I'm having, I think, technical difficulties on my end. To answer your question, Councilmember Gamblin, yes, this would be to really start the work that works towards achieving the goals set in the UFMP.
Right, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes, thank you guys, and yes, thank you to Planning Commission Chair Baughman and Vice Chair Nupure for getting a 7-0 vote on their recommendations, really appreciate that. Couple of things, and I don't know if this, I feel like it's relevant because we're talking about budget, but we did have a recommendation that's come in to us before, which is a fees for trees program, where we take any tree fines that we issue for people who are cutting down trees inappropriately, and we put that in a fund that we can use specifically to fund the actions in the Urban Forestry Management Plan. So I really like that idea. I don't know, you know, what we, if that's something that staff wants to think about and come back with a recommendation before we would take that under consideration, but I really love that idea. We also got public comment, and I didn't get a chance to look through it, but Jan Bird sent in comment, and I don't know if that's been forwarded to you guys, but I would love to share that with you. Obviously, she's very involved in the stewards program and often has some really great ideas. When we're looking at policies, I would love it if we make sure we look at policies that ensure that trees that are being planted are appropriately sized and spaced. I feel like we create problems for ourselves when we allow, you know, whether it's in development or even just, you know, people having remodels done or whatever. We put a bunch of trees in, and then we have to take them out because they're too big for where we've put them, and they start to create problems. And that's not really the cycle that we want to encourage. So I don't know if that's part of the plan, but I would love to see that. And then as far as a tree board goes, look, trees are a critical element in our, in sustainability and healthy environments. And they are a critical part, but they are still only part. So I feel like instead of implementing a tree board, we should be looking at an overall sustainability board, that trees would be a part of that. Because realistically, just looking at trees and not looking at an overall sustainability and climate action strategy, we're not necessarily doing all the right things. And I love the way you guys introduced this, where you talked about trees in support of, and I can't remember exactly how you said it, but you said something about in support of, you know, things are still gonna happen, right? We're still gonna have to live. So was that you, Evan, that teed that up, or was that you, Kelly, in the very beginning?
Yeah, it's talking about the balance of our responsibility for the environment with the human endeavor.
Thank you.
Yep.
Exactly, and I think that that is so critical, that we have that overall sustainability strategy, of which, obviously, the Urban Forest Management Plan and Implementation Plan is a critical element of. But there has to be a larger strategy that this is part of, because we don't take into consideration that human endeavor if we only look at the trees. So those are just my thoughts, but thank you so much for all of your work on this. I think the Urban Forest Management Plan is great, and I'm glad to see us kickstarting this and actually getting it started, so thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to, one, kudos to the Planning Commission, they did a great job on this. And I wanted to make sure that I, so, one, I want to make sure we absolutely let them know that. They did an absolutely fantastic job on this. I kind of disagree with the sustainability and the tree board being put together. I agree that under the same heading, they've got a lot in common, but I see them as two separate entities. Because I do believe that the tree board Because I do believe that the tree board needs to be under this, really, it's trees. And the sustainability is such a big topic and covers so many different things, that I see it as just a very separate board with so many different things that it would cover. So, I would see that as being two just completely, completely different boards. They can be kind of under the same heading, but just, I don't see them being the same at all. So, I wanted to kind of weigh in on that. But I did have a question for you, Kelly, and maybe you can answer it for me. I saw that Redmond was a tree city, and I was just wondering if you knew what their percentages that they kept for trees was and what you needed percentage-wise to have to be a tree city?
Yeah. There, I believe it's four criteria, and I'm going off memory, so.
I had them sitting and wait, just in case.
You're amazing. Thank you. It's magic. The first standard would be, obviously, having a tree board. So, we've had a lot of discussion on that tonight. And we, planning commission is proposing that we do that research and get that going in the next year and a half and providing options to the city council for consideration. The second is a tree care ordinance. So, this would be reviewing our current ordinance and probably expanding it. The third standard is having an annual budget where we spend at least $2 per capita. I believe in our urban forest management plan, we exceed that currently today. So, that one is an easy one for us to check off the list. And standard four is an Arbor Day observance and proclamation. And again, I think this is one that is easily accomplished. So, I think for us, the biggest, the one that we'd have to really be active on, the standard one, would be establishing that tree board.
Yeah.
And looking at and doing a review and update to our ordinance.
Yeah, because again, that tree board, I mean, there's so many things that we've got going on with the different diseases in the trees that they'd have to, you know, study and learn at and where that, where that is in the city and the different types of trees that would live in what areas of the city. And, yeah, I can just see that being very different, so I think that's great. And then, I also agree with council member Stewart, and I like that the fees that are collected should go back in toward this very, very topic. So, it should go back into the, you know, any fees that are collected from the tree, you know, if it's collected for taking trees down, it should go back right into the trees itself. So, I agree with her very much on that. Okay, awesome. Okay, next, I've got deputy mayor.
Thank you. So, yeah, I think the planning commission did a labor on this thing along with staff, so I'm very appreciative of all the time and energy into this. I do have some questions. And first, the mayor was just mentioning the tree city designation, and I recall having this conversation, I think, prior to the mayor being on the council. And I believe that the sticking point that we came to on that designation wasn't just that we didn't have the board, but I believe that there was some, like, huge fee associated with getting a designation. And maybe I'm incorrect on that, but I think at the time, we were like, mm, and it was just for, so you can say that you have your tree city USA rather than doing all the things and then not paying the fee to just say that we're tree city USA. Some of it keep in mind if we're trying to garner that designation. So, there were obviously, I think there were like 159 reference numbers in that implementation matrix. And so, my apologies if I missed this as I read through all 159 of those. One thing I did not see was anything about a recipient site. Is that in there? Did I miss it? Or is it not worth it?
Like a tree bank?
So, we have an issue in the city where, and I encountered it personally, we had to take a tree down on the property. I had to go through the process, which was borderline nightmarish. I was, so I'm happy to see that one of the goals in there is goal 110 is to streamline the tree removal. Because I do think it needs to be easier for people, and I'm not suggesting it's easier to take the tree down, but people are more likely to go through the process of obtaining the permit to remove the tree and then subsequently replace it if the process to remove it in the first place is not a huge hurdle. But what I struggled with, and, you know, people may roll their eyes and think this is a ridiculous statement, but we couldn't find a place to put a tree. I'm talking, we literally had to squeeze one on somewhere just so we could get the replacement tree. And I'm telling you, that tree is in a place where it's going to get removed too. It's going to, because it is not in the appropriate location. And what I really needed, and I suspect several people do based on lot sizes here in management, they need a recipient site. And there are places in the city, in like critical areas, where we can really use that recipient site. So, if I've missed the recipient site thing in here, you know, put me to it, but if it's not in here in that format, then I am adamant that we need to add that in here because that will assist us in our tree canopy for the future.
I agree.
Go ahead, Kelly. I've got my other hand.
We do have a considered development of a tree in new fund to create provisions for tree key planting on private property, but I'd like to look into this more and see if we need to expand that further to clarify that point because you're correct.
Yeah, I don't think.
Where's the physical location of these trees?
Yeah, that's the thing. I mean, we would have happily paid into something to have the replacement tree that we ended up having to put in, in a more appropriate place. But if we don't have the place to put it, that fund is just going to sit there, and it's not growing trees. So, we need to identify locations, and maybe those locations are on somebody else's private property. I mean, if I have to replace the tree on my property and somebody else is in need of the tree, how do we make those connections? Because I would have happily planted my tree in someone else's yard if I, if I had that opportunity, but I didn't, wasn't given that opportunity. I had to plant it on my property, and I'm like, okay, where am I supposed to plant it? That I don't already have a tree. Because I planted a whole bunch of trees, and unfortunately, the tree that I had to remove, I think, is covered in some of these goals. I want to verify this as well, that this planted tree too close to my house. And I had to keep cutting the tree back because it was literally growing into my house, and eventually, it was going to start, you know, getting into the foundation of my home because they planted it like five feet away, which was not a good idea. And so, I think either goal 25, 27, or 28, where the reference numbers might cover that. I know there's, you know, information here about, you know, developers planning, but I think if we need to refine some of these so that when developers are building new homes and they're putting landscape on there, somehow, there's got to be provision for them to not put the trees in places where they're going to get removed in the first place. They've got to be in places that are appropriate. And I think that's covered in there, but I wanted to bring that up just in case either 25, 27, or 28 was not specific to the developers and where they're planning it. And then, I think it was reference 20, which was specific to laminated root rot. And I'm not sure where, honestly, I don't recall where that lands on the timeline. I have to scroll back down. But I think that one is so critical, and I remember kind of harping on this a few years ago. I think this was probably before we'd even like hatched the urban forestry management plan. Because every time we have a tree fall over in the city somewhere, we have an opportunity to look at the tree and find out if it's laminated root rot and map it as suggested through GIS. Because we're, we're missing opportunities to identify where laminated root rot is in the soil and other trees in its vicinity, which are subject to laminated root rot too, especially if there is a dug fur. And then, that education component kind of layers on top of there where we can then educate the person, okay, you had a tree fall over in your yard during the last wind storm. Don't have anybody come and take it down. Let the city come and have a piece of the root so that we can check it and see if it's laminated root rot. And really, I mean, I still remember when we embarked on this process with Doug, like, looking at laminated root rot. I think I'm like proficient enough that I'd be able to go through and be like, yep, that's laminated root rot, because it's such an obvious looking thing when the tree has it, but you can't tell until it falls over and you can see the root. But if you can map that, we could really help educate for the future as to, hey, don't go plant another dug fur, because guess what? It's also going to get laminated root rot and fall down. We need to plant another species there. The water truck, which is reference 92, that's way out in 2025 or 26. I would really like to see that one moved further up, and here's why. There were a few years ago, out on 244th, and we lost a ton of street trees out on 244th due to drought. And if, you know, there's other trees in the city, I don't think the city ever went and replaced them. I think in fact, there's still a whole bunch of dead trees out on 244th. But if we could obtain that watering truck earlier in this process as far as an implementation strategy, I, my hope would be that we'd be able to save more of the trees. I know we did sprinkling system along Southeast Forest, kind of with this in mind, but I don't want to lose trees because of drought. So, if there's any way to move that up, that would be great. But overall, I think the implementation strategies are all very comprehensive, very well thought out. I really do appreciate staff's time and energy into this, as well as planning commissions and bubbling with thought to us. I'm very eager to get it going. So, I, of course, want to, you know, kind of approve what the planning commission's recommendations are with the caveat of the comments that I just made. So, thank you.
Okay, council member Odell.
Thank you. I too saw that Jan Byrd had sent in a public comment. It's actually four pages of very well thought-through comment, and I encourage everyone to read it and take it to heart. The water truck idea, I think, is a good one for the reasons that have been mentioned. We've put a lot of money into planting trees. We might as well try to keep them alive. Perhaps in the off-season, the truck could be repurposed for another function like snow removal, that type of thing, because we don't need to water them in the winter. The question I had, though, is I thought I saw a focus over 20, for 20 years. Trees live a lot longer than that, 40 years, 60 years, 100 years. And I'm thinking that is probably something that we want to address in here somehow. Another item is 150 implementation actions. Seems like an awful lot. I'm not sure how we manage this. So, what is the true cost of this program? I saw a number of, I saw arborist, and I prefer the term forester rather than arborist. A forester, someone who studies trees, and arborist, to me, is a guy who runs a chainsaw, which is not what we want here. The easiest way to have an urban forest is to maintain what you have. And I hope a primary focus would be on retention, 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 all over the place, and not just in city property and city rights away, but also in privately owned land. And I do like the idea of having the tree permit activity, shall we say, particularly the fine angle, be repurposed for perhaps providing for the forester and/or the enforcement person as well. I think that could become a self-funding thing, to be honest with you. And, you know, I mentioned the privately owned land thing. I think there's a good deal of education that could be done and should be done, more than we already have, on the value of these trees to the property, they increase your property value, they help keep your house cool, things like that. So, focus on the self-interest along with the overall environmental benefits as well. I think we've put a lot of effort into educating people on how they need to pick up dog poop to keep down the bacteria level in public waterways and improve the water quality. We could do the same thing here with respect to tree retention. Overall, I like this. I think it needs to be maybe simplified a little bit to become more manageable. I'm afraid it could become so manageable, we don't do it, or so large, we don't do it. So, those are my, those are my comments today. Thank you.
I think that's the end of our questions for.
We do have a couple more. So, I do want to ask a clarifying question for deputy mayor Malchow. Evan, could you go back one slide, please? You mentioned procuring a watering truck. Would you, I guess I'd like to get some consensus from or a heads nod from the city council. Is that something that's appropriate to move to group two, where we come back to city council as part of the 23, 24 budget discussion and have that number for you for consideration? We could move it to group one and bring that estimate to procure a watering truck as part of the mid-buy discussion this fall. So, if I can get some clarification on, and maybe a heads nod from the city council on where we'd like to move that, that would be fantastic.
I have a question about that.
Okay, so, I'm going to go into the box here because it looks like council member Stewart had a question. Was it on this?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Thanks, Kelly, for bringing that up. I do have a couple of questions about the watering truck. Obviously, we want to keep our trees alive, but just driving around in a fossil fuel vehicle spewing water out doesn't, also doesn't sound like necessarily just by itself. I feel like there's more research that we need to do into it to make sure that in, you know, saving those trees, that we haven't negated all of the positive environmental effects of the trees we save in doing that. So, I would want there to be a little more research into that and understanding the best way to approach that, and is having a watering truck driving around the city the best thing to do, or is the best thing to do that as, as we go through cycles where trees may be struggling, that we find more drought-resistant trees to plant in those places? And again, I'm not opposed to, like, obviously, we want to save the trees, but again, we have to look at it more holistically, I think.
Okay, deputy mayor.
Yeah, I think I'd like to see the watering truck moved up if possible, and I'm not sure that I can give feedback. I guess, I mean, mid-buy would be an interesting place to find out. I mean, I'll be honest with you, I don't really know what we're talking about here. I don't know if you have an estimate. I realize that you haven't obtained that yet, but I'm thinking somebody maybe has a ballpark idea. Are we talking about a $75,000 truck? Are we talking about a $150,000 truck? And again, we're not going to get less expensive over time. But, you know, we definitively have trees, and I don't disagree with council member Stewart, that, you know, planting drought-resistant trees is not a bad idea, especially when they're up against asphalt because they're just getting baked against the asphalt. But the fact is, is we have existing trees now, and they're not getting replanted, they're just dying. And if you drive down 244th, you'll notice a lot of dead trees. And I don't want to lose any more. And if we do this in the next mid-buy, that means we don't have the water truck till next summer, summer 2022, to be able to water some of these trees. And while I can appreciate the, you know, fossil fuel trucks, the reality of electric vehicles right now is that you can go buy yourself an electric SUV, but I don't think that electric SUV with a water tank on the back is going to go very far, and the trees aren't going to wait for that technology to catch up. So, I think my preference would be to move the water truck up and at least give it to council for consideration and advice.
Mayor, members of council, I'll just throw in my two cents. We could use some of our existing fossil fuel vehicles. In my past, a number of things I did was some farming, tree farming, and you can get a skid mount water container. We've got these skid mount sanders that go in the back of the trucks. We've got the trucks. We just slide a water mount tank. You could probably do a 250-gallon tank on the back of that thing, and we could start watering next week. watering next week.
That sounds perfect. And then you can come into my yard, and then I don't have to fix my sprinklers. All right. That sounds good. Okay, so do we have any, I'm trying to see in the chat box here. Do I have any other? Oh, Councilmember Treene.
Yeah. I make a motion that we approve the planning commission's recommendation for the Urban Forest Management Strategic Implementation Plan as presented, group one, two, three, and four, as listed in the packet.
I'll second that. Discussion? Do you want to speak to your motion?
Yeah, this is a plan, a strategic plan that gets us started on what we adopted already in 2019. So we'll begin funding it. City manager and his staff would be more than happy to get this on the work plan. And there's already, some of this is already on the work plan, so it's just a matter of some of the work getting done and we get it started. And again, my thanks and hats off to the planning commission and the work of staff on this. Congratulations.
Okay, I'm going to the chat box, and I see Councilmember Odell.
Thank you. I'm in general support of this motion. However, I heard a lot of talk this evening about things that might want to move around a bit, and I don't want to lose track of those because I thought we had some good ideas. For instance, we just talked about the water truck. Well, I'm not sure that the timing of that is what we just finished talking about here. I think that the city manager is absolutely correct. We could take a de-acing truck, take the tank of that thing off and substitute a plain water tank with a couple hoses, and we only need to use it during the really dry times of the year. We don't need it 12 months of the year necessarily in that function. I do think that we also talked about redirecting some of the fine activity toward precisely the kind of thing we're trying to do here as opposed to the general fund. I would hope we would capture that somehow with all of this. So I'm wondering if we're ready for this, or we want to have some of the modifications taken into account and then bring it back at a future date.
Kelly, do you have all the comments that were brought up tonight?
Yeah. Yeah, I have all the comments. Sorry, I'm getting an echo there. I guess the watering truck, you know, to bring that to our city manager, we can come back with that research and provide some options as part of a group plan, our group one work program, so that we could move. I do would like to follow up on some of Deputy Mayor Mauchow's questions. I think regarding implementation strategies and land banking, tree banking, you know, trying to enroll 50, 150 implementation strategies from memory is quite difficult at 11:30 in the evening. But I do believe we do have it covered there. We can, but I'd like to follow up with that. So unless that, you know, I don't want to hold anything up. If council is ready to approve this, that's fantastic. We can also incorporate any of these red lines and bring it back on July 6th on the consent calendar for approval, as well as answering the questions.
I recommend bringing it back on consent with the changes red line.
I'll just let you know, the whole plan gets to be reevaluated every year, so the initial group one establishes inventory, analysis, update. I mean, it's got the budget part into it already, the research that needs to go in for the tree board, the website. So there's your year of activity that's going to need to be done. We can move forward.
Are we going in the queue or are we just randomly talking?
I was addressed by the mayor to speak, so--
You were.
If you're talking about me just being random, you need to be very careful--
Okay.
--how you address stuff.
Okay, so let me make sure that we've got everybody that's gone, going first here. Deputy Mayor.
No. I actually do think Councilmember Stewart is ahead of me in the queue there.
I believe she spoke--
I'm sorry, Councilmember Treene, I didn't-- Not on this motion.
Oh, you didn't, oh, that's my fault then. I'm sorry. Councilmember Stewart.
So we all love the plan. We're all in favor of the plan. But there have been a lot of feedback, and we also addressed the fact that we got four pages of really great pieces of feedback from a resident that we wanted you to take a look at. So I don't think we need to jump on this right now. I think your plan was to get some initial feedback from us and come back on July 6th, and I think we should stick to that plan to give you a chance to take in all this feedback and make the appropriate updates. So it's not, now, the one question would be, is anything going to be delayed? Are you not doing something if we don't approve this plan tonight?
Evan, do you mind moving up a couple of slides to the council direction? So our preferred option was, again, to incorporate any feedback we received tonight from city council and provide a red line document and answer those questions, and provide that to the council on the consent agenda for July 6th. So no, you would not be delaying anything. If you approve that work plan, the set on July 6th, we start work on July 7th. So there is no major delay.
Okay, so I appreciate the motion on the floor, but I think we should go with staff's preferred options so that they can incorporate all of the great feedback that they've received. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, likewise, appreciate Councilmember Treene's motion that we want to get this moving, but I do think it's very important that we incorporate our feedback that we've given this evening, and we don't have that until staff has an opportunity to go back and kind of fund that. And because we're not losing anything by allowing staff to incorporate our feedback, I think that is the preferred timeline that we should stick with.
Okay, does there any other discussion? Okay. We have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. So can you repeat your motion?
Yeah, that we approve the planning commission's recommendation of the Urban Forest Management Strategic Implementation Plan.
All those in favor say aye.
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 And those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the, Chris, how did you vote?
No.
And it is a three, four vote, so it is, this will be delayed till the 6th. It will come back on the 6th of July.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Please, on discussion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Mayor, are we--
Yes. Hello?
Yes, I, isn't, I don't have, is item four not on the agenda anymore?
Well--
It's still on there.
It's on there, but it's 11:30--
Okay, so we're--
We would have to extend or we adjourn.
Okay, just wanted to clarify since we've had staff members waiting.
Andrew, were we this morning?
Okay. So everybody's packing up. All those in favor? Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay.
Aye.
That would be a six, one. See everybody next week.
Sorry, Dave. Got to start sending a message, man. Freaking being--